Good evening. We will call to a word of the regular meeting of the City of Edina Planning Commission for April 11, 2012. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Commissioner Scholz.
Here.
Commissioner Laugn.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Plantter.
Here.
Commissioner Tuchols.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Grabel.
Here. Thank you. The first item is the approval of the meeting agenda. You all received a copy of that in your packet. Are there any additions that anybody wishes to make to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The first item for business is a carryover from last meeting. It is the adoption of the bylaws. Our bylaw committee is headed very ably by Commissioner Carpenter, and I would ask him if he would please lead us in a discussion on the bylaw amendments.
I would be happy to. Thank you. The copy of the bylaws that the commissioners have in their packet is a redline markup of changes that have been recommended by city staff. And I thought what I would do is, in terms of process here, is I would go through and just try to highlight the changes that I thought were pertinent. First of all, just generally characterize all of the changes that were made as what I felt were reasonable. They augmented what was there before. They filled in some holes that I think were missing previously. So I did a lot of cleanup. It added a few things that one might argue perhaps aren't necessary, but, and I can touch on those briefly, but in the end, I don't really think that they do anything negative, and I think they do a lot of things positive. Just walking through the changes, the first thing I just call your attention to is under section nine, and I'm working off a different pagination than what you have, so I won't reference the pages. But it really, it details the order in which we consider matters as a commission. I think what we had originally put in place was recommended by the League of Cities, and the reality is that our format is just a little bit different. So this basically brings the proceedings process into conformity with our actual Next comment I would have would be to jump ahead to, let's see, section 12 on what used to be ex-party communications and now have been expanded. The first section or subsection is the same ex-party communications provision that we've had in the bylaws from the very beginning. None of that has changed at all, but there is a new subsection B that has been added now that is entitled "Communications Between Members Outside of Meetings," which establishes a procedure or a set of procedures for communicating outside the meeting context. And really, the purpose behind those provisions are to make sure that we conduct ourselves in accordance with the Minnesota Open Meeting Law as it relates to a number of individuals that are necessary to achieve a quorum. In other words, to, in this case, we're talking about communications outside of public meetings. We're really talking about the need to maintain communications with a number that would prevent a quorum from existing. Otherwise, we would have to be complying with the open meeting law for that purpose. And to that end, if you look at sub-paragraphs, just for example, B1 and B2 below, you'll see a conversation or communication regarding email communication, avoiding serial communication. For example, those types of things can actually have the effect of triggering an open meeting requirement. And so the purpose behind this language is to allow us to, is to allow us to communicate by email, but to do it in such a way that we avoid triggering an open meeting issue that would put us out of compliance with state law. Next item I would highlight, you'll see under sub, or new section E, which appears, where does it appear? This must be under section 16. Yeah, section 16E, I'm sorry. You'll see a city staff liaison position that has been included now. This is consistent with the, I think, the changes to the city code. And it basically provides an augmentation to the services or the duties that we already have by, or not so much an augmentation, but a, I guess, ancillary support to our duties by providing access to a city staff liaison that provides, you know, some of the coordination that we would need for conducting our activities. Next item on there I call your attention to is section 18 on committees and working groups. These sections are really something that we haven't had before, but what they do is they formalize to some extent how we may break out into committees or what's been defined as working groups for taking on particular projects. In that regard, I think maybe it's important to identify the definitions for committees and working groups. If you look under section, I'm sorry, section 18B, you'll see a definitional section there that says that committees and working groups may be comprised of two or more people, one of which is the chair appointed by the planning commission. A committee is comprised of current planning commission members only. A working group is led by a planning commission member but will also include members of the public. So those are two different things that we have the opportunity to activate if we feel it's necessary to do so for our role. But again, it's not mandated that we perform those functions. It's just a, it's just an opportunity to do so. The last couple items I'd bring to your attention are under section 20 and section 21. Section 20 concerns financial transactions, really putting us, or documenting our need to avoid, let me just take a look. I'm just going to actually read that section. It's very short, and I think it's helpful. "All financial expenditures by the planning commission must relate to the planning commission mission and be covered under planning commission budget. All expenditures must be approved in advance by the majority of voting members. The city staff liaison is responsible for ensuring that all approved expenditures or reimbursements meet the criteria, as well as other city financial policies. Expenditures that do not meet the criteria above will not be reimbursed. The planning commission does not have the authority to execute contracts or otherwise financially obligate the city of Edina. Any contract related to planning commission business will be managed by the city staff liaison and may be subject to city council approval." I think this just simply reflects essentially how we've been operating all along, but it at least clarifies the limitations on what our role is, and I think that's useful to have. Section 21 is a section that basically obligates us to conduct ourselves in ethical and respectful manner, avoiding conflicts of interest, discouraging the receipt of gifts, particularly under circumstances where we may be interested in voting on a particular matter, encouraging respectful behavior, and really, quite frankly, to a large extent, if not entirely, the types of things that we, I think, generally conduct ourselves with. In that regard, I think it's a reminder, more than anything else, it's, I think, that we, as a commission, already conduct ourselves with a high level of ethical and respectful perspectives. So those are the changes that I thought were important to highlight in the materials. But if anybody has any questions, if there are any sections that somebody feels would be worth discussing further, I'm certainly happy to have that discussion.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Forrest.
Yeah, I, it's not really a conflict, but there's a little bit of tension on first read between the second paragraph under purpose regarding amendments and then the amendments section that we have, which is number 19. In that second paragraph, it says that proposed bylaw amendments should be announced one meeting prior to voting on the proposed change. In section 19, it says, the right page, that the bylaws can be amended, provided that notice of said proposed amendment is given to each member in writing at least four days prior to said meeting. It's not really a conflict, but because I think one is notice to the public by having a proposed amendment at the prior meeting, and the other is when our packets are delivered to us at least four days prior to the meeting. So, but I would suggest moving that second paragraph under purpose, if possible, to the amendments section to head it up, and then maybe clarifying those two sentences or in some way so that it's really clear that there isn't a conflict, because it, both times it just says notice should be provided, and one says one meeting ahead, one says four days ahead. So it's just not, it's good, it's not, I think it would be more useful to have them all in the same section. And the other thing is, in the third paragraph, of purpose again, copies of the documents will be made, the city code and bylaws, available to members at the beginning of their service. I'd also like to see copies of any state statutes that are applicable to our responsibilities, which probably isn't very much. I'm thinking of the variance statute, which is just a short statute, be added as to what's offered to us.
Right, right.
Provided for us.
Number one, I don't have any objection to that. I'm stalling, not because I'm opposed to it, I'm just thinking about how we would characterize. Maybe the best thing to do would perhaps be to identify specific statutory sections that we thought might be useful, because otherwise the issue gets to be a little bit vague and maybe difficult to perform.
The numbers can change over time, and they may add something in. I mean, you know, they may switch subsections, things like that. And so I think it's just those that are directly, maybe those statutes that are directly applicable or directly apply to our responsibilities or something. So it's not to be a burden to staff at all, it's just, sometimes it's nice just to have that handy.
Mr. Fisher?
You know, maybe one way to handle that is just to say, you know, you're going to get a copy of the city code and any other orientation materials that are applicable. And if staff wants, if they think it's some statutes, or it could be some of the latest information someone picked up at an APA conference, whatever, there's just a bundle of information that people should have for orientation.
I think that's a good idea. Also, in the past, we've gotten handouts from the city attorney regarding interpretation based on case law that he's aware of, so I think that's a great idea.
I'm a bit concerned about requiring that certain things be given to the planning commission members when they come on, because the first, you know, how do you define what's directly applicable to planning commission? And, you know, I think there is, it is somewhat incumbent upon members of the commission to, you know, all of the statutes are available on the internet and should be easily available to everybody on the commission, and I just hate to enshrine a requirement that may be ill-defined.
That's why I like, I like the idea of having it be other applicable orientation materials, because, I mean, we can just drop that idea too, if you'd like. I'm just, I think that definitely we can look online, and, but sometimes it's nice to have things that provide some guidance for process, so.
I think it'd be fine to actually go with Commissioner Fisher's comments. It's generic enough, it allows a certain amount of flexibility, and staff can make the decision about what would be applicable and appropriate.
Okay.
Doesn't find us in receiving or delivering anything specific.
Excuse me. Other comments? Commissioner Plantter?
I have a minor one on section nine, the proceedings, and maybe, maybe it's not critical, but under the new order on their number six, community comments, should that go ahead of public hearings? Just in the respect of people might be here for comments and not waiting through the hearings necessarily to get to that, so, just a thought.
What's our normal practice on that?
I thought it had went before it.
Well, that section I noted was in conflict with what our tonight's agenda is.
That may make sense, though. Maybe we should be moving that ahead of public hearings.
Yeah. I think public hearings are designed for public hearings, to address specific items on the agenda, and the public comment has come before the rest of that, so.
I didn't catch that.
It could be an attempt to, because remember when we first brought on community comment, it was the last thing on the agenda?
Right.
So you had to, like, make it through the whole meeting?
Right.
And then we moved it right to the front. Maybe this is an attempt to kind of try the middle, just to see what that's on. I do think it should, I do think it should go before the public hearing.
I haven't heard one yet in a year, but.
Any other comments? Mr. Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I have a question back on, it's section 18, under part D, the part of a public access. And I appreciate the idea of having written minutes for committees and working groups, but I know for those groups that I've been a part of over the last several years, having minutes, having to be written, reviewed, approved, is extremely onerous, and it could consume, in past groups we've had, it's consumed like half of the meeting we have. We've, in some cases, opted for doing meeting notes and recording actions where a vote was taken of the working group or the committee, and having those recorded as minutes, but the rest of it has been a more general kind of recording of the notes of the discussion without having to have all of those things somehow committed as meeting minutes. And I don't know, Commissioner Carpenter, if there's any legal distinction between the two, but I worry about how much time we've spent in the past wrangling over the specific wording of minutes on some of these committees I've been a part of.
I don't think the open meeting law addresses with any great specificity the requirement to document. So I would think that the generic kind of approach that you're suggesting, or maybe the more limited approach, may make sense. You've got more experience in that area than I do, and if generating and recording minutes is an enormously time-consuming and sort of self-defeating process, then it probably isn't.
Well, I'm certain that if Commissioner Staunton were here tonight, he'd have something to offer on that, but maybe Commissioner Plantter, or Commissioner Potts, or Commissioner Fisher could weigh in. And Commissioner Fisher, I think we actually discussed this when we were having the zoning ordinance update committee, how we're going to record those things. And I think, actually, Director Teague, I think we actually opted for doing notes and not actual minutes, and it was only when we brought things back to this group then, when decisions were actually made, that we put it into minute form.
Chair Grabel?
Mr. Fisher?
Oftentimes, where we go, where we like to go for the notes is when we, you know, a lot of these processes are very publicly oriented. In other words, we want to, it's not a formal meeting, it's informal, we're trying to get people to participate as much as we can, and by virtue of that, it's hard to, you know, we're not asking people to come up and give their name and address every time they want to throw out an opinion, so you're trying to, to the extent you can, take notes that explain generally what was happening, but we're not concerned with that level of detail. And that's where I think there is an important distinction between minutes and notes. It'll be nice to have that ability to not feel obligated to have, do the formal minutes.
Carrie, if I'm correct on this, I think was not this language suggested by the city staff?
That is correct, and I believe there is some flexibility. It talks about some committees and working groups may be designated as public meetings by the planning commissioner, city council. I think there's a little flexibility, as an example, of the grand view process. We've taken minutes any time there's a vote on the steering committee, and those become minutes at those public meetings, and the rest are notes, like we had referred to.
I'm just wondering if you might be able, I think we're not going to be able to, judging from where this discussion is going, and somebody else can disagree with me if you'd like, that we will refer these comments that have been made back to the bylaws subcommittee for revision and inclusion into the draft, and then we can bring this back at the next meeting. And Carrie, maybe during that time, you could check with the city manager as to what the intent was and get a little bit of clarity on that for us.
I can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Plantter?
I just have one comment, referring to the grand view piece. I mean, if we had minutes on that, just as an example, we would never get anywhere. I mean, the minutes would have, would consume the meetings versus having notes or references. Just, this is an aside, 60 people in a room like that or something is, we're not going to get meeting minutes out of it. Or maybe once, but we wouldn't go any further than that.
You're suggesting that substance is more important than form?
Yes.
Why? I just don't know.
Other comments on the bylaws? Okay, with that, Commissioner Carpenter, I would ask that you take those comments along with input from the staff and continue your drafting and.
I will do that.
Excellent work. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And then, I guess the objective would be to be able to conclude this issue at our next meeting. At least we'll shoot for that. Next item, approval of the consent agenda. The first item there is the approval of the minutes, speaking of minutes, of the meeting for March 28th, of March 28th. You've received the minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes to be made to those meetings, minutes? Seeing none, I will take, oh, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, on page seven, and it's one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down, it notes, Commissioner Fisher commented the essential character of the neighborhood is 55, 50-foot wide lots. Commissioners didn't disagree with that statement. Actually, our findings actually said that the character, the essential character of the neighborhood was a mix of 50-foot lots and other-sized lots, so I think we, I think nearly all of us disagreed. I'm not actually sure that was the comment you made. I think we were trying to make the case that the neighborhood's essential character is a mix of lot sizes, not just 50-foot lots, and it was essential to the findings that we made in our denial.
Yeah, I think my character statement was mischaracterized, so.
Would you like to re-characterize your character statement?
Well, I think what I was saying is that there was a variety of lot sizes here, which made it different than the more consistently sized lots on other blocks.
So the change would be that the essential character of the neighborhood is a mixed?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on the minutes? All right, with that then, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Commissioner Fisher.
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are adopted. Now, speaking of community comment, community comment section is the next item on the agenda. Community comment is to allow residents of the city to share new issues or concerns that have not been considered by the planning commission in the last 30 days and which are not slated for future consideration, i.e. not items that are on the agenda tonight or scheduled for future meetings. So with that, I will ask, are there any residents who wish to provide any input under the community comment section? Yes, sir. Please come forward to the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking.
Thank you for the time. I'll make it brief. I know you've got a limitation on it. I'm Art Heim. I live at 5205 Richwood Drive. That's that circle back over here that they want to change the whole aspect of our living over there, where they knock off of the street of Sherwood, and then they tell us that, don't worry about that, you can always go through Grandview Square. And I've talked to a lot of people in Grandview Square, and that is not something that they're interested in having happen at all. As a matter of fact, one of their streets is private, and they maintain it. But to go back to the issue of going through 53rd off of Vernon and cutting in or getting out, I've made several attempts lately to see what might happen with or without a light, and I've had some cars that have become dangerously close. Tonight was a good example. I had my signal on from the semaphores at the gas stations on Eden, and I went up that way, and I had cars, I was slowing down to make this turn and go this way, and I had a pretty close call there, and then as it was, the car, the traffic was coming up Vernon, I had to really get going to avoid being part of that traffic. So getting in and out of 53rd is not just another way to get in and out of our area, which most of you know by now is one way in, one way out. The benefit to us is the fact it's a quiet street, we have lots of small children that moved into that neighborhood because their kids can virtually play outside. And then, on the matter of going through Grandview, I don't think that is going to work from what I've seen so far, and the people over there are hopefully going to make their voices known, and I've talked to several of them, including to a former minister of mine, who says he thinks the idea is way off-base. And so I just want you folks to know that our neighborhood of 47 homes is very much upset at this particular point. There were supposed to be others gathering with me tonight, I'm just saying that they couldn't make it, but it would change our lives as far as going in and out. And the idea of going through Grandview, I'm sure if it appealed to us, it wouldn't appeal to them. On the other matter of the whole development, we've known about it for a long time, and I'll make one minor comment on that, and that's the fact that it seems like it's going to be an awfully big change to our area in many ways, from the standpoint of the amount of buildings and the height of the buildings which you're going to consider, you know, yourselves here sometimes. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that is something that would really change our way of living over there, and I thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Other, other community comments, we will be having an opportunity for other members to.
Yeah, that's on the 70.
Make comments on the Grandview district development.
Appreciate that.
But you've kind of preempted the discussion here. So are there other residents who wish to talk about things other than the Grandview development? Because we are going to, we are going to have an opportunity to comment on that again. Thank you, Mr. Heim, for your comments. We'll take those, we will, those are noted. Moving ahead, reports and recommendations, appropriately enough, the next type of topic is the Grandview District Development Framework, and Commissioner Fisher is going to walk us through that. And so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Fisher.
Is this working here? Okay. Chair Grabel, all commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to update you here on our, the Grandview Framework Plan. What do you want me to use? Okay, I can do that. What I'm going to do is talk about what has changed in the plan since the last time we were here. Just to let you know, we had a public comment period that went from January 30th to March 28th. And then during that public comment period, we held a public hearing here at the planning commission. We held a meeting with the Richmond Hills neighborhood on, I believe, the Sunday before that. We had an open house here before the planning commission meeting. We've had several steering committee and executive committee meetings where members of the public have joined us and a council work session where we discussed this with the city council. And I do want to talk about, so what I'm not going to do is go through and present the whole plan again. And so what I would ask people, if they're watching at home and you want to see what the plan is all about, I would encourage you to go back and review the meeting on the 22nd. Or they're probably, well, certainly you can go on the website and see all of this. So I'm not going to go through and present everything, but I want to talk about what we did change. And, you know, it's the reason we have public comment periods, that we make improvements to the plan based on the comments we get. So I'm going to go through and talk about the changes. So the first one is on, and hopefully, I know this wasn't in your packet originally, but hopefully you received it today or you have it on your desk. It's a very nice document that shows the original text and then what's changed or drawing. So one of the things that came up, if you recall, at the public hearing, there were two primary themes. One was from the Richmond Hills neighborhood, and Mr. Heim, I think, hit on a lot of the issues just tonight. And it's very similar to what we heard before. It's what we heard on that Sunday when we gathered with the neighborhood at the senior center. And frankly, members of this neighborhood have been very engaged ever since, and it's added to the process, it's made it better. So there was the theme there with what we're doing with Sherwood. And then there was, Mr. McReeby was particularly concerned about, you know, we were showing a road going through his property. And so how do you deal with that? And it's probably, it's not the only property in this plan that we're, you know, drastically changing over some period of time. So we had a lot of discussion about that. How do you show a plan that has a vision for 30 or 40 years from now and yet not show changes to anyone's properties? And how do you do that? And so as we talked about it, we said, let's make it clear in the plan that there isn't an intent to go out and take somebody's property rights away from them, that the intent is that we're creating a fantastic public realm and creating the opportunity for private property owners to exercise their rights to improve their properties. So the primary change here on page three, under item three, is to add the word voluntary between encourage private development. So leveraging public resources to make incremental, value-creating changes that enhance the public realm and encourage voluntary private redevelopment. That's really what we're talking about here. So I thought that was a really excellent change to the document. On page, I believe that's page 30, where we talk about public realm and where we're specifically looking at the area Vernon, Eden, Sherwood, and the library. You can see this is the scheme that Mr. Heim was talking about where we've changed the fact that Sherwood comes through. See if I'm getting this right. Yeah, right here. And so several people are upset that it changes the dynamic. All of a sudden, you're opening 53rd onto Vernon, and the discussion was that traffic had to go through the Grand View Square. Actually, the traffic never has been planned to have to go through there, but I can see where people are getting that perception. So a lot of what we talked about, a number of things. One is, and I'm going to show you later, that we have alternatives that are different than what's shown on the screen here. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But we also added a paragraph, number five, to this page that says that any additional street and block improvements, including curb cuts and/or traffic signals, should be considered after improvements have been made to Vernon and appropriate traffic and parking studies have been completed. Also referring to the potential alternatives in the appendix, which we will get to. So the really important part of that discussion is folks from the neighborhood were saying, look, we don't know for sure. You know, we know what it's like today. Mr. Heim talked about that. He's out there, he can see it, and it's hard to imagine with the Vernon that's there today making this change and that it'll work really well. But the neighborhood is at least saying, you know, let's make sure we're not showing this in the early phase. Let's push this out after Vernon is redone and let's see what it's like then. Then we do the studies, then we see if we can imagine that happening. That's why that paragraph is where it is. As it relates to Mr. McReeby's concern, we moved this road right here. So we have, if you recall, what we call the frontage road spanning between Vernon and Eden, we just moved this road that was going through their building a little bit to the south. So it's no longer shown going through the building. In this case, we made two changes on page 36, the road I just talked about going south. And there was also just a little glitch that we discovered in the new realigned frontage road down here and then the entrance to the freeway. So that's one other change. That wasn't, that was just an edit more than anything. Page 38, similarly, we're showing the road moved south up here. Then what we've done in the implementation sections, before we had the work on the Sherwood fairly early, is an early phase. Here, under public realm, we're suggesting adding tree-lined streetscape and monument signs to the Richmond Hills neighborhood. When we met with the neighborhood, they talked about being promised in years past just having, you know, trees planted and a gateway or a monument at the entrance to their neighborhood, which didn't happen in the past. And we're saying, you know, that could be something that happens in the first five years to add some of what we were trying to get in front of the library was just a more, a softer, more direct access to the street and a little bit more of a front yard. And so there are a few different ways we can do that. And then for the five to 10-year plan, so we're pushing out some of this, more of the complete streets, the library, green space, fronting Vernon. So we just reordered how some of this was happening. Now I want to talk about these design alternatives, and we're going to talk about them for the library, the whole Sherwood situation, and also in the area of Arcadia and the McReeby property. We are not suggesting that the, there's a reason we did this. What we did is, instead of having just one plan that shows this is the way it's going to be 35 years from now, we're saying, what we're trying to send is a message that says, this is a big picture plan. So you have the big vision, but there could be 100 different ways that that gets implemented in any given area. So using these illustrations to show that there are any number of alternatives that could happen. And the idea is by implication that that would apply to other areas in this plan as well. So here on page 65, we have on the top left, you have the proposed illustration that was on page 16 of the plan. And then we show alternative one, which has just a variation of where just reducing the way the parking was done, make it a little bit more street-like with different access points. Same with alternative two. But importantly, we also have an alternative that literally is the way it is today with trees along the street and the gateway, you know, a little bit of intersection work, but a, you know, potential for a gateway sign. So the point is, we don't know exactly how it's going to turn out, so we're showing those alternatives. Same with Arcadia and Gus Young. The proposal looked like this, which, you know, there isn't any remnant of the building that's there today. It's a complete new development. And that may well happen depending on what, you know, that particular property owner decides to do, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now. But we're also showing that different variations can happen without any changes to that property. And that's going to apply, again, all over this district. But we had to be very careful that we don't just stop putting a vision on paper, you know, because it would look different for someone today. And so there was a lot of back and forth and conversation in the meetings, and I think everyone felt pretty comfortable with this way of illustrating it. And then coupling that with the change of wording that says, look, it's not our intent to go in and make changes on a people's property. It's going to be their decision. I believe that is it for the changes we made. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Are there questions for Commissioner Fisher? Of the, by the commission?
And one thing I should probably mention is that it would be our intent tonight. So last time we came to you, we said, we're not looking for any decisions. We just want to give the public an opportunity, if we give the commission an opportunity to ask questions, give the public an opportunity to see a presentation, and then continue on giving input during the process. Tonight, we would ask that if the commission feels like this is ready to be moved on, we'd ask for your vote and recommendation to move it on to the city council.
Comments from the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
I'd just make one general comment that probably states the obvious. I know that the group that's been working on Grand View has been doing this for a long time, and it doesn't doubt, I don't doubt at all, and I'm not very surprised that there are countless permutations of alternatives that are out there. My guess is, it's probably fair to say that one can almost guarantee that what Grand View will ultimately look like may not resemble much of this at all. And that's not to diminish what's going on here, because I don't think you can get from point A to point, you know, B without some interim planning and speculation as to what might be useful to get there with. But, and I want to be respectful for all the, you know, the neighboring property owners who have concerns. I mean, I can fully appreciate that those concerns exist. But I think one way to at least look at this is that at this point, it's a plan without any feat to it, and those feet will come in place or that momentum will be there somewhere down the road when developers actually want to develop a particular piece of property. The concept that they have may or may not resemble what we have on paper here, and hopefully, you know, long-term, it will be a good thing. There's just no way to guarantee an outcome. And other than to say that I think that the plan that we're looking at is probably as close as you're going to get before reality hits, and reality's going to probably look a lot different.
You know, if I could respond, I think you make a good point, but I would say that the process, and I would agree that it may not look anything like this, but I can assure you that it's going to be a lot closer to what we want as a city than it would be had we not done this process. And the beauty is someday, I know I won't be on the planning commission, but someday when a project comes before this commission, hopefully you'll have something to point back to and say, you know, you're not heading in the right direction with this. As you're doing that sketch plan review, at least you have something in your hand that says, you know, not really going where we thought you should be going here.
And I didn't mean to take, I agree with everything you just said, and I hope that my comments weren't interpreted in that, you know, contrary to that. I do think you're right.
Other comments by the commission? Commissioner Potts?
I think picking up on what Commissioner Carpenter said, and for people who are watching and perhaps referring to the development framework document, on page six is this concept diagram that was arrived at, you know, fairly early, and I believe we're still following as we go on to the land use illustrative master plan on page 16, which I would describe that as moving from concept to vision and an important step as you start to describe what may happen and start to present this to the outside development community. It's a necessary step and certainly agree with what's been said about all the flexibility that's built into it. It still lives on the framework put down in the conceptual diagram that's on the screen now. So I think those are, those show a progression and development that's important to recognize.
So I'm just going to give the visuals for what you just said. So Commissioner Potts was referring to a diagram that came out of the end of the guide process, which is what we have on the screen. So it's a very diagrammatic, and that's, you know, our main goal at that point was just to have the guiding principles, and then this diagram went along with those. And then you're saying page 16 really illustrates, you can see that it's much more polished looking, you can start seeing actual building forms, everything else. So that's, it's quite a, you know, progression in terms of our work, but it's still, back to the point, you know, those buildings may not be exactly in those forms and shapes, but that's really what we've accomplished here in many ways.
Right. And I think that master plan that's up there now is the way to start discussing how the conceptual diagram gets flushed out to the folks who we've now added to the dialogue.
Yep.
Other comments by the commission? Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you.
This is not a public hearing. We had a public hearing and we closed a public hearing, but Mr. Heim had a couple comments and suggestions about this, and the commission would be, and I'm sure the task force would be happy to hear, any additional comments that any other residents might wish to make at this time. It will be added to the history of the project, so to speak. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make any additional comments concerning this issue? Yes, sir. Is there anybody else? I'm just trying to gauge who'd like to speak and how much time we got. Please come forward to the podium, give us your name and address, and give us your brief comments, sir. Besides...
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My name is Joe Hoover. I live at 7627 Harriet Avenue, Richfield. My concern with the Grand View plan is, I would like to, and I brought this up on the website, and that is the issue, and I would like to know during all these hearings, has anything been discussed about low-income housing for workforce housing for Richfield citizens, for the low-wage jobs in Richfield, or in, I'm sorry, low-wage citizens in Edina for low-wage jobs in Edina? Because as one of the things that you know, that there is a very great lack of low-income housing in Edina. And indeed, there hasn't been anything built for workforce housing in Edina, far as I know, since, specifically since 1983 with the Yorktown developments, which was built in Richfield School District. Okay? So I see here an opportunity for, you have, you own the land, this isn't a cost of land, and I see this as an opportunity to develop workforce housing, for affordable housing, for people who are, you know, nursing assistants, who work as clerks in the department stores. This is something that's very important. So if this has not been addressed, and I haven't seen it addressed at all in any of the material that I've seen, so I would like to address that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Any other residents wish to comment on the process? Okay, thank you. Mr. Heim and Mr. Hoover, your comments are noted. They will be passed on with the task force report. They are enshrined in the public memory by the video tape that we have here of this meeting tonight and will be available to the city council. Who, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Fisher, there will be public hearings at the council?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. We've heard the reports, and the action for the commission is to accept the report of the task force and to refer it on to the city council. Is there a wish to have that action taken? Accept the report of the task force and refer the matter on for further consideration to the city council. Is there any further discussion? I would add only that our thanks to Commissioners Fisher and Commissioner Staunton for the work that they've done and for all the... that they've done and for all the input that's been provided in this, the residents and the staff and everybody involved in the process. It's been an interesting, an interesting process. Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Fisher?
Just before you make the motion, I just want to make sure we don't--
Motion's been made.
I'm sorry, before you vote, Commissioner Schroeder is actually very instrumental in helping design this process as well, and we've got Commissioner Potts and Platerter, who have been part of the steering committee. We've got steering committee members out here, so a whole lot of people very involved in this.
See, that's what happens when you start to name person A and B, and you forget to name C, D, E, F, G, and the rest. Mea culpa. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments tonight. Next item of business is sketch plan review. 7501 France Avenue, construction of a freestanding coffee shop with a drive-through. Planner T?
Request for a sketch plan review, relatively straightforward one. This is located at 7501 France Avenue. It's in the Centennial Shops Shopping Center. You may recall the Whole Foods that's soon to be opening, I believe it's next week, located right here, and the site we're looking at is on the south side of the entrance, generally in this location here. Again, here's France Avenue, the entrance into the center, and the applicant is proposing a coffee shop that would be located right here. Would have a drive-through facility with adequate stacking space, would circulate this way. You may recall, there was a drive-through out within this parking area. It was generally about right here, associated with the McDonald's, that has moved out of the space, and that drive-through facility has been removed, and parking places, parking spaces put in its place. So, in a sense, we're trading out one drive-through facility for another. Looking at the site plan and in the table that's within your packet, this plan conforms to all of our minimum zoning ordinance requirements. There's enough stacking space. But the applicant wanted to bring it forward in a sketch plan format to get planning commission feedback in regard to the circulation and thoughts on the drive-through itself. A traffic study would be required as part of the site plan request to flush out some of those issues, so that would be forthcoming in a formal application. But with that, staff is generally comfortable with this. Again, it meets all of our zoning ordinance requirements. The intent here is to build a structure that would match the new Whole Foods to tie into the whole center. So, with that, I can stand for questions, or the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Planner T. Other questions of staff? Commissioner Schroeder?
Carrie, I have a question about just the, in the development agreement, there are some relationships between retail and residential. I know we're early, but will that have any impact on what's allowed to happen here? And I really, you know, even without going forward, I like what I'm seeing here, but I know that we had some restrictions in the overall development agreement for Centennial Lakes direct proportions.
You're right. That's an excellent comment. We'll have to see where that, how that all shakes out in terms of the square footage. If I'm not mistaken, the Whole Foods that was built is actually a little smaller than the retail that went in there, so we may have some wiggle room in that regard, but that'll be something that we'll have to flush out.
Mr. Platerter?
Carrie, and I know, maybe it never got too far, but was there, wasn't there in the last couple of years, discussion on drive-throughs and what that meant? And, you know, could you maybe expand in some of the history on that, and were, you know, is there anything floating through the city on that right now?
Yeah, there was. It was more focused on our planned commercial district one, our more neighborhood commercial zoning areas. The council actually approved an ordinance amendment that would allow them in our PCD one zoning districts under a lot of certain conditions. There is a movement afoot to repeal that. It was really based around a project that was before us, yeah, at the Wooddale and Valleyview site. That project didn't come to be, and so there's a recommendation out of the Environmental, Energy and Environment Commission to repeal that ordinance. So, that is something that's kind of in the works at this point. This is a mixed development district where it would be a permitted use under the old ordinance and existing.
I note that there are no drawings of proposed structure or anything, I mean, we've, I guess we're really looking at the concept, the naked concept of having a coffee shop with a drive-through at that corner. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. They have indicated that they'd like to construct a building that would match the Whole Foods and kind of into the new remodeling of the center, but we don't have concepts.
Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to make any comments here? Because I know there will be a few comments or questions for the applicant.
Good evening, Chair Grable, and members of the commission, staff that is here, and those in the audience, and those viewing at home. My name is Bruce Carlson, and I am project director for Min America Real Estate here in Minneapolis, and I have been, again, hired by the owner of Centennial Lakes Shopping Center to continue on what our team started. You may remember me from Whole Foods days about a year ago, and we went through that. And the addition of Whole Foods has brought interest to the shopping center. We've added McDonald's, as you know, left, and we've added Jason's Deli, so we're very encouraged about that, and several other tenants have also come along from Whole Foods, Ideal Image. We just opened up Pro Cuts, so we have a lot of interest, and we have an interest now from a coffee user. And so, one of the things that we're excited about this particular use is the compatibility of when coffee is busy and when the rest of our tenants are busy. We are going to be completing and conducting a traffic study for this, but before we got to that, we just kind of wanted to show you what we're thinking and get your comments. I do have our architect, Kathy Anderson, who I'll have come up and talk more about it. I'm in charge of engaging the architects, civil engineers, the tenant, the landlord, bringing everybody's in the city and residents, and bringing everybody's concerns together to try to make this happen. And so, the compatibility is one thing that we're excited about, because the coffee shops are busy early in the morning, when most of our tenants don't really get rolling until about 10:00 AM here. So, that works out really well for this particular use, and we think it'll be a benefit to the residents as well, something that is needed in this area. And then also, Kathy can talk a little bit about the patio and landscaping and streetscape. You know, we've added windows and a patio at Whole Foods and brought that to France Avenue, and we've re-landscaped the entire shopping center, so this will complete that. We don't have elevations yet, so I apologize for that. We're working on that right now. So, we will not be using, the tenant that we have there has their own prototype elevations, but we'll be presenting elevations that are compatible and work with what we did with Whole Foods, with that stonework and brick and everything as well. So, maybe at this point, I'll have Kathy come up and walk us through it just a little bit, and then you can ask questions then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Kathy Anderson of Architectural Consortium. Just in general-- Could you get this on the screen? From a site planning standpoint, the orientation of the building, we're careful not to block visibility to the remainder of the tenants, which is very critical to those back tenants. And you can see that we've got simple circulation throughout the site and access to the coffee shop from a variety of different entrances. As Bruce was mentioning, I'll point out the opportunity for the patio out in this corner here. We've got a widened sidewalk for outdoor dining, and this larger churning radius and island is a great opportunity for more landscaping as well. And we will continue through, as Bruce mentioned, with the same detailing and exact same brick and stone and actual brick patterning and such, so that it will fit with the rest of the center. Small building like this, being out in front and having all four sides visible, I think it'll be a really nice showcase out, as a little gem out in front, and there's a lot more we can do than some of the larger boxes architecturally. That's it.
Okay, questions, specific questions of Ms. Anderson or Mr. Carlson, and comments from the commission? Commissioner Forrest?
I guess I'd just like to see us remain vigilant regarding people who don't drive cars. So, access to the building, you know, as you go through your final planning, access to the building, safe access by pedestrians and bikers, as well as, I'm not sure where the closest bus stop is to this location, that because it's designed to have heavy traffic circulation, it's nice to know that there are easy ways to get there, that there's adequate bike racks.
I think that's a great point. We do have the sidewalk that's included that comes down from the bus shelter, and we'll make sure that we do have crosswalks, particularly where the drive-through is, and there definitely will be bike racks and opportunities in that patio area as well.
Maybe I'll jump in on that. You may not remember, but we were actually trying to get the bus to hug France Avenue on the Whole Foods side. Whole Foods wanted to have a bus stop near them. Right now, the bus comes down 76 and actually, and then takes a right and heads north on France, but crosses over across France Avenue to get on kind of the left side, and then continues on Park Lawn. But we did add, you know, as part of our development of Whole Foods, we added a whole new sidewalk on France Avenue, so that's going to tie right into, I don't know if you can put that back out again. So, we have all new landscaping.
So, we have opportunities to tie into the front.
And then we would add, we added bike racks for Whole Foods, and the coffee user is much of the same vein of Whole Foods, would like that very much to, that just means more customers. So, I'll mark that down again, though, just to make sure that we address that when we come back with our final plan. So, pedestrian, bikes, working with that, and also having good crosswalks there with the, you know, slowing traffic down for the drive-through if people want to go from the sidewalk and cross over with the drive-through there, too. So, we'll do some traffic calming around that drive-through.
I have two questions or two issues. First one deals with people coming out of the park and possibly people who live on the other side wanting to walk to the coffee shop. Is there anything on this central driveway, is there any way to put a kind of a walkway down that way for people so they don't have to walk, you know, through that parking lot?
Yes. Let's do, you know, I think, boy, the shopping center would love that. I think that also is an issue that has come up with emergency vehicles turning, you know, and getting across there, but right now, there's an island there. There's no left turns out of that central entrance.
Right.
And there's no stopping of traffic right there. So, you know, I think if you ask the shopping center owner, I can speak for them, they'd probably like to put a stoplight there, open it up, and have a whole central crosswalk. I don't know how that really works for the whole--
Well, I'm not talking about--
Okay. On France Avenue?
No, I'm not talking about France Avenue. I'm talking about east, the lake, the lake is back behind the shopping center.
Oh, yeah, oh, coming from the pavilion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, coming up that street going west to get, yeah, that way.
I would think we could extend the sidewalk here and then get the crossing safely across the drive-through.
Because we have sidewalks on both sides already right now, on coming down the central entrance, yes. Okay, so, work on, from the pavilion to the coffee shop.
Continue that leg.
Right.
Okay.
And then the other, the other comment I have, and I hate to sound like a broken record, there are at least four coffee shops that I'm aware of in the general neighborhood, starting, you know, none of them have drive-throughs, and I'm just, what, what is the need and justification for a drive-through in a coffee shop? I just do not see that need, because the other coffee shops in the area don't have drive-throughs.
Well, the coffee shop that I use is at the Galleria, so there's a coffee shop there that doesn't have, it's next to Barnes and Noble.
Right.
Okay.
So, there's five that I'm aware of then.
Yeah.
Forty percent of coffee sales are through a drive-through window, and I think for your community, you know, this is, France is a good commuter road, and there are a lot of people that, you know, pass through here, and the convenience of being able to have that drive-through, I think, is a good thing for your community.
If you say, if you, if you stand out and watch a coffee drive-through, and what I was going to make the comment on the Galleria, there, there's always a drive-through, it's just that, that's a quasi-drive-through, so people pull up and run in and run out because they don't want to get out of their car. But I think for, for a majority of them, it first starts on the list of parents with kids, so you have a kid in your car seat, and so to, it's a whole ordeal to get everybody out of the car, go in and get everybody beverages, and then get back in, where a drive-through allows you, you know, not to do that. But I definitely can agree with you, you know, you're going to save money, you can stop your car, you don't have to idle with gas. But right now, every coffee shop knows that the highest volume and the most profitable coffee shops are coffee shops with drive-throughs in the, in all of America, actually. Sometimes it's cold out, and people don't want to--
Yeah, it's, it's tough. Commissioner Platerter?
I have a couple of questions, just on that drive-through. I think this is just really wasteful for a drive-through personally, putting, putting on my environmental hat and the cars that are going to idle there and sit and waste gas, so I'm, at least can be put something there, maybe they don't do it, but, you know, shut off your cars when you're sitting in line too long or something.
Have a sign?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, no one will ever do it, but at least people are aware of it, so they know that they're, they are wasting, wasting gas as they sit there versus taking two more minutes and running inside, but--
Like a time limit on a sign, you know, idling past--
Yeah, you know, come--
I wonder what that calculation is.
No, I mean, when there's in line, I meant, that's what I meant, in line, waiting at the drive-through. I mean, again, will people always do it? Probably not, but at least something there to mitigate some of that.
Anecdotally, I can tell you, I always worry, I think about that, actually, and I worry like, my car's not going to start up, like, I'm in traffic, like, why do I have to have my car idling, and then I'm like, okay, now I can't start and stop traffic, but I hear what you're saying. We can, we can pass that along to the potential tenant. I wonder what the calculation is, too, for idling, an idling car for 10 minutes? I don't know what that is.
It's pretty quick to restart it. You know, the modern cars, you don't, it's not like the old cars where you had more into it, now it's pretty quick, so that it's almost instantaneous.
I need to get--
Modern cars?
Modern cars. I have a 2001 Ford, so--
And then I, you know, just to reiterate the point of access across crosswalks, if you do have the drive-through with pedestrians to get in, I would, I would almost say both sides of the, let's see, east and west sides of the, into that, across the drive aisles from both cases, because I could see people coming from both the France Avenue side and then from the back as well. And the other thing, you do mention four-sided architecture, and it would have been great to see something with that tonight. I mean, just a suggestion for all those other people coming in for sketch plan to have something available for us to look at. The other piece with that, I've seen it, you can just go right down the street to the Five Guys Building there. They have electrical conduits and gas conduits going right up the side of the building on the back. We don't want to see this here. You know, whatever you're doing, and make it all a finished piece without mechanical system sticking out. As you said, it's a jewel box sitting out there, so I wouldn't want to have anything that detracts from that, and you can get ahead of that right now.
As far as we can by code, there are some new things that have to be on the outside, unfortunately, now.
So, take a look at what you can do there, and, you know, if there has to be something, make sure it's on the, whatever the backside is here, so.
Just a couple of comments, maybe a question as well. I was looking at the, at the drive-aisles coming off of, to and from France Avenue, and, and I think it's good that there's going to be a traffic study, because I'm, I'm just curious how much congestion there will be as, as people make that turn into the parking lot to, you know, to get in line with the traffic flow for getting their coffee, et cetera, and, and also getting out. So, I just, I don't know how that interplay is going to work. Traffic study should help clarify that, and that's, that's probably my biggest comment. The other one that's going to suggest is, I don't know if this is possible as well, but I assume there's going to be a certain number of people from the Whole Foods area who have parked in the parking lot, who may just walk over to get a cup of coffee, which case is it possible to have any kind of marking for, for pedestrians?
Well, I think from Whole Foods, you'd probably take the France Avenue sidewalk. And there is a crosswalk.
Yeah, well, they might just walk directly across.
So, oh, you're thinking here?
I figure they'll take the shortest route, is my guess.
Right.
And maybe it's already done, I know there's not a stop sign coming in from that way, and I don't know if that's probably because of stacking.
Right.
I don't know, but that always bothered me at that intersection, that there's not a stop sign coming in from France, so.
Well, you have to, you have to get the, the traffic off of France.
Well, I know, I'm just, I don't know how far that, but it is a pretty good stacking distance there.
Several centers are like that, Southdale's like that, too, where you got to let incoming traffic.
Yeah.
Get out of the way. But, but that's noted, and I, I think, you know, again, kind of to the, to the first comment, is that this is turning into, you know, walkable, with Whole Foods coming, it was really a great find and a, and a great thing to happen, and with their patio, the fact that they agreed to do a patio out there, and now if you go out there, the patio is really nice. It, it opens on April 18th, so, next week, and, and I think, you know, the coffee shop counts on, on that, too, and is going to like that. So, I think all your comments are good as far as crosswalks and pedestrian, and we can take that back and come back with some of these things.
Other comments of the commission? I like the idea of having something up close to France, there at the corner. I like coffee shops, don't like drive-throughs. And, you know, I, and, and this particular drive-through, it seems to me, you know, the first time a car backs up into that big driveway is going to be a problem. Maybe there's another way you can, you know, reverse the flow of the drive-through or something like that, so that.
The car does need to be on the, the relationship of the window of your driver's side.
I guess, I guess it does, doesn't it? Yeah.
I think the traffic study will show that, too, and I think, I think, you know, as far as the other tenants are concerned, and the shopping center owner, the fact of, of when coffee shops are busy is the thing that this has going for it, the fact that there's not going to be anyone else really in that shopping center that's open even at the time, like I say, until after 10 o'clock. So, that, that may show to be helpful on the traffic study.
Well, I, I understand it. I guess what I'm saying is, if you come back to the commission with this plan that shows a drive-through into the coffee shop, I'm going to want to see economic justification for a drive-through in a coffee shop.
Also, economic.
Because I'm not convinced that coffee shops need drive-throughs, because there are so many coffee shops that don't have drive-throughs, and I'm going to want to see a really sound, thought-out traffic study as far as justification.
Yep, we have, we have some data that we can show you on that.
We're using SRF, we're using.
WSB.
WS, I'm sorry, wrong letters. WSB for the traffic studies, we'll have that. And then, as far as you want to see, like, a financial statement, or how do you want to see that?
You, you made this, you made the statement that coffee shops need to have drive-throughs.
Right.
And I look at five that I know of, and the only coffee shop I know of in the city of Adana that's got a drive-through is the one up there off of Gus Young Lane, and none of the others do, and they don't seem to be going out of business. So, I, I question the justification for asking us to include a drive-through.
I would say this, if you could ask every one of those coffee shops, you know, if they would prefer to have a drive-through, if they would do better with one, I mean, they would say yes, but I have to get an affidavit or something to that effect. I could show, if I could try to get volumes, dollar volumes, and of course, being a capitalistic society, everyone's trying to do the highest volume that they can, and if you owned a coffee shop, or if I owned a coffee shop, you would actually do higher volume, you have the same staff, the thing about retail is you have the same staff onboard, no matter if there's one customer in there or eight customers in there. So, you'll have a more profitable coffee shop. I'll try to see what I can do to, when we come back, to show that for you, rather than just anecdotal evidence.
Right.
The International Council of Shopping Centers, we do have written statistics, as well as I am working with a local coffee group, who their real estate department are looking at all of their shops without drive-throughs and determining other real, real estate locations.
So, if there, there are apparently some kind of statistics to justify drive-throughs, I, for me to, for me to be in favor of this, and I'm speaking only for myself.
Right.
I, you know, I want to see some justification for a drive-through. Mr. Fisher?
Carrie, could you just, one more time, the way I was reading this and what I heard you say, is this, this, they don't, I mean, this is a, a right that they have with this property to have a drive-through, right? So, I mean, it's, it's, in this zoning district, drive-throughs are allowed.
That is correct.
So, for us to not be in favor of a drive-through, does that even matter? I mean, they have, by rights, an opportunity to drive-through, right?
That's correct. At our, our first cursory look at this, it appears that it meets all of our zoning ordinance standards. Commissioner Schroder brought up the mixed development district where we have an overall development plan, and there's a certain amount of square footage that's allowed based on the number of housing units. Assuming that those, if we're in a line there, then yes, they would be entitled to put in a coffee shop with a drive-through.
There'd be no variance required whatsoever that I can see unless that is triggered. Just curious about that, because, so this automatically comes back before us?
It would, it would be a site plan review.
Okay.
I think that's because it's a new building.
Right, and we're adding square footage, so, and we want to get an answer on the traffic study, make sure there's no negative impacts on traffic.
Well, what's our discretion on this, then?
It's, it's essentially a checklist to make sure that all of the zoning ordinance requirements are met. So, assuming that we have everything, it's really just a checklist, that's what a site, just a plain site plan review is. We don't get too many of those. Generally, we, we're looking at rezonings and variances and things, so.
We don't know what to do.
That's the same thing you said for Whole Foods. You don't have no variances or anything for that, so.
I like Whole Foods, I like coffee shops, I don't like drive-throughs. Commissioner Forrest, and then Commissioner Schroder.
Oh, where did you?
Thank you. I have a question. This is in our mixed development district, and we're putting a building here, and we talk about it as a coffee shop, and Mr. Carlson, you've mentioned the patterns of use in a coffee shop, but if we allow this to move forward, and apparently we have nothing to really stop it, there's nothing to prevent it from not being a coffee shop and being something else that has different traffic patterns. So, as we look at how we deal with traffic patterns on the site, I think we'd be doing a disservice to this process to focus on the least impactful, which is the coffee shop with the offsetting peak hours, as opposed to trying to project ahead what this might come if it's, what become, what might become if it's not a coffee shop, which would probably have more concurrent peak hours. I don't know what that use might be.
How do we handle that?
Well, I would, I would suggest at 1700 square feet, 1750 square feet, there's an alternate restaurant service that has higher, or has a, a peak hour use that is more concurrent with or closer to the peak hours.
Yeah, like McDonald, you could say.
Exactly.
Fast food or whatever.
Exactly.
But how would that prohibit, then, I mean, because then you could just.
It won't prohibit the use, it will tell us what the traffic patterns are.
Right.
And I think that's what we're, I mean, some of the things we're hearing relate to the traffic patterns on the site, what do they do for movements back out of the Centrum Drive and even back out onto France Avenue. If we limit it, if we focus on our traffic study and just those, the, the least conflicting use here, from a traffic perspective, I think we're not really looking at the issue, because you've identified it as coffee, but really, in the mixed development district, it could be anything, not just coffee.
How would I explain that to the shopping center owner and the coffee shop user that, yeah, you're okay, and you, but at some time in the future, something else might come along, so you can't go here? How would I do that?
I, I'm, I like this idea. I would rather have you go through the traffic study and say, here's what we have for coffee shop, here's what we have for a McDonald, for a more typical fast food restaurant, and these are the traffic, but those are the traffic patterns that I think we're going to be concerned about. It's not what's going on with the coffee, but what happens if the coffee, and I don't think the coffee won't be successful, but what if the coffee is not successful and something else comes in here?
Well, then, could it be denied because we do a study on some future hypothetical use?
I, I don't know that it could be denied, but you may have to reanalyze how the circulation works to prevent, to mitigate the traffic impacts from the higher volume use.
Could you do, like, a conditional use, approve it for coffee, or, I mean.
You, you could, you could submit this through the PUD process. It could be, it could be a PUD. If you want to know how you could do it, we have that now.
If, if I could, if I could jump in, we're, we're just putting together the scope of work with, with the traffic consultant. I think we can add that as a layer. What would the impacts be if this were a fast food? It would just be added into the, into the traffic study.
I'm a little concerned, I'm a little concerned that, and how, how we handle it. And it may turn out to be a moot point, because it may be fine, it's, I mean, the place is busy and handles it for many years, and McDonald's was there, and so, they're obviously, I'm just struggling in my mind right now, and trying to think on my feet how I handle some hypothetical use that's not contemplated and that it, it leads to a denial. I mean, there's going to be a lot of time and money and effort and spent on this, and I can understand if the traffic doesn't work for coffee, I mean, I get that, and you go back to the coffee user, like, you know, you don't work, we know that, but to say, for me to come up, you know, and stand here and, and go like, I, I did it for fast food in a frame shop, and I did it for a, I mean, I don't know where it ends and how, how, how have others handled that here?
I think the size at 1750 from a traffic engineer's manual or magic book or whatever it is they use, you know, that does rule out a McDonald's and some of the things we're talking about, and I'm not sure what that 1750 restaurant alternative to a coffee, if it would be different than a coffee shop. Mike might know more.
But my point was that we're focusing on coffee, and that's not the only use that's, that's allowed here. You want to do coffee.
Right.
Now.
Yeah.
But it's not the only thing. We'd be approving a site plan with a building that has 1750 square feet in it, that doesn't have to be coffee, it could be something else. And when it doesn't have to be coffee and it is something else, I'd like to know what the traffic impacts are.
So, for, are we, what we need to tell the traffic engineer is a 1750 square foot food user, food coffee user with a drive-through, and I think they're going to find that it's probably pretty much the same as a coffee shop.
I, I agree, you're not going to find that much difference, but I think we just want to be sure, because we're not approving a use, we're approving a site plan with a, with a building of 1750 square feet.
Commissioner Forrest?
That was great, because I, that was my question, too, was, was what about future uses, and trends can change, people might, you know, prefer ice cream to coffee in the future or something. So, I guess I just want to encourage you to look at it very holistically going forward, including the traffic, the fact that, you know, not necessarily what the parameters are under any formulas that are used by traffic studies, but the fact that Whole Foods is there, people might park their cars, walk across that double drive to meet their friends for coffee, go back and forth, just kind of look at it with the, the potential use in mind, yeah, there's a great sidewalk, but nobody might, you know, it might be that nobody will use that one. So, that, and the reason I say that is because this is new construction, it's something new, let's do the best we can.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I may need a little bit of clarification, because I, I think I started out understanding, and, and somewhere in, in the middle of it was still understanding, and now I'm not so sure I'm understanding anymore just exactly what our role is here, because right now, as I understand it, I think, they can go ahead and, and build a coffee shop there and a drive-through, and as long as it conforms with the ordinances, subject, I think, only to whether or not it, it passes muster with the traffic engineer, there's nothing else we can do. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, or am I misunderstanding something?
We're reviewing, we're also looking at the zoning ordinance and making sure that it meets all of our minimum standards.
But as I understand it, it does. Is that?
We think so, yes.
Okay.
Again, this is just a sketch plan review.
Yeah, no, I understand.
There will be a much more in-depth review with a formal application.
Okay.
But that's right, a site plan is essentially a checklist to make sure that all of our zoning ordinance standards are met.
Commissioner Fisher?
Well, I would just say, in general, I don't have any big concerns with this. I'm assuming, you know, there was a McDonald's in this lot, I think it was in a much less workable spot in terms of the traffic and the impacts on this site. I don't really, it's just intuitively, it doesn't feel like there's going to be big issues traffic-wise. I think it, you know, given the fact that you have a drive-through here, which you have the right to have a drive-through here, I think the way it's laid out will work as well as it can, and, you know, I, personally, I think you're better off with targeted pedestrian access and not having sidewalks coming from 24 locations, but, you know, I'm sure you'll work that out. And, you know, I just don't have any concerns with the use here.
Any other comments? Thank you for your presentation. Take the comments that we've made tonight, some with a grain of salt, and we look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
Y'all set with Whole Foods?
Yes.
Good deal. Thank you. Next item, correspondence and petitions. You received the council connection in your packet. You have the attendance sheet before you. The only one that's suspect is me, and up to, I'm up to 71% tonight, so. Chair and commission member comments? I have no other comments. Does anybody on the commission wish to make a statement or add anything to the conversation? Okay, staff, staff comments?
I do have one quickly. The, I sent out an email today to the, the commission. The volunteer recognition dinner is April 23rd at Braemar from 5:00 to 7:00, and we have a planning commissioner who is an award, going to be an award winner. Kevin Staunton has won the Outstanding Public Service Award for his work on the Grandview Project. This is the mayor's award, so I would invite any of you to attend, and if you want to do so, just let me know, he can send me an email.
A well-deserved award. A couple of us are not going to be able to attend, but I hope many members of the commission will be able to attend that event, and I'll honor Kevin, because he deserves the honor. Other comments? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.